Good evening. Good evening, welcome to the regular town council meeting on April the 17th. Please rise and Dennis will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dennis. Are there any visitors who wish to be heard? No one? Okay, moving on. Item number three, approval of minutes for the April 3rd, 2024. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Item number four, appointments and reappointments. Is Richard Martin here tonight? Richard Martin, are you with us tonight? Evening, Richard. Richard Martin has been with the agricultural RAC board since 2016, and he wishes to remain. Brian had applied because we felt we needed someone. He is happy to take back that application and to allow Richard Martin to continue serving well. Is there a motion to appoint Richard?
So, no move.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Richard. Barb from the library is not here tonight, I believe. She would like to be considered as an appointment to the HCH Library Building Committee. Is there anyone who would make a motion to put Barb Lesher on that committee?
Make a motion.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah.
Great.
I understand that she's on the Library Building Committee, I mean, the board.
She would like to be.
She's also on the board.
Yes.
That would give them four members on a seven-person board.
Okay.
And I think that's a little bit of an overload. I had talked to Mary Beth after our last meeting two weeks ago, and I said, in the fact that my contractor did not come forward, that maybe we'll find another neutral person. There was a lady standing right there that volunteered to do it, Dolly Mazzetti, and I contacted Dolly as much as Sunday here, and she would still love to serve on that. So, I'd like to, I don't know this lady and have nothing against her, other than the fact that I just think for, quite frankly, I have another question I was going to ask later on the discussion, but I'll bring it up now. Who's paying for all this whole renovations? Is the town expected to foot the entire bill, or is the library going to also chip in on this?
I believe that we're just at the study phase, and the library has chipped into that. We haven't discussed.
Oh, I know that.
We haven't discussed.
And we chipped in to get the architect. I understand that. But I say, when we get to the final nuts and bolts and get down to, we're going to do whatever it is, and I don't know the numbers, but I would imagine, just on face appearance, that it's going to be a million, million and a half, maybe $2 million to renovate that front portion of that building. Is this all on our town shoulders?
I imagine.
Because, you know, I, I tell you honestly, you know, I'm always open, you know, I'm always, I don't hide too much, as people know. I like to be fair, square, but if the town's going to foot this bill, then the town should have the major input on how much money the taxpayers are going to be spending on this. We're the representatives of the town, the taxpayers. Do you understand what I'm trying to say? I don't think it's right that the library committee or the library board is going to tell us what they're going to do to our building on our people's defense, if it makes any sense at all to everybody here.
Are you suggesting?
I mean, where are the builders, or what? What's going on here? Who's going to foot the bill when it comes to, I know they're going to apply, I saw a message today from Mary Beth, and get me wrong, I have nothing against that library. I use it almost twice a week, getting books and all, and things of that nature, so I have, I'm not against it. I just want to know where we stand before we start digging this hole, you know what I'm saying? I mean, particularly, you saw tonight, you know, about that paving thing that we had earlier in the workshop, we've got a lot of expenses that are going to be coming up here in the future and impact our budget. And, so I just, I just ask that question in general. I know they're going to apply for a state construction grant, but, you know, that's not a guarantee, and so that's, that's my feelings about this before we, you know, go headlong into this thing.
So, for now, it's the appointment, and is there further discussion about Barb being on that board? Dennis had a point.
So, I would just, I mean, I like Dennis's point, I think that's a great point. So, what would we need to do is, is to ask Dolly to submit an application?
Yeah, I would, I didn't want to embarrass her by, if this was a done deal tonight, you know, understand? Have her put an application in, and then we have two ladies, you know, we got to do that interview thing again. I don't want to put people through that if we don't have to. You know, so, I wish Mary Beth was here tonight so we could have found out if, in fact, she could ask this lady, Barb, to withdraw her name, so, you know, make things easy, and nice and polite, and we put Dolly in, she's a neutral person, and, so.
Well, isn't she, isn't she, she's supposed to be here anyway, so maybe we can just say we're not going to vote on it tonight?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if we can table it until next, next meeting, that'd be fine.
Sounds good.
Okay. Thank you.
Table it? Okay. Motion tabled? All right.
We had a motion on the floor.
Yep. And we had discussion. So, do we have to?
You have to withdraw the motion.
Okay.
Withdraw the motion. Second.
Second. Discussion again? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Great. Withdrawn. All right, Chris?
We're going to do a new motion to table. If we do a new motion to table.
Okay, all right. So, now we have the need for a motion to table. Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Okay, motion carries. The final appointment for tonight is Michael Rush for America 250 Advisory Committee for a term until 1/1/26. Is Michael here?
Yes.
Oh, hey, Michael, how are you doing? Welcome. Would you like, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Tell us about your background and why you're interested. Sure, so, I, I trade and training in archivist. I work at Yale's Plenary Book and Management Library, so I have a 25-year-long career working with history and historical documents and educating people with those. So, you know, my education is in American history, and my love is for American history. I'm already acting in town, I'm the scout master for 255. Just this weekend, we hiked the Freedom Trail in Boston, so this is an activity and something that's dear and near to my heart as a bicentennial baby myself, so I'd love to be involved in Clinton's celebrations of the 250th anniversary.
Thank you. Anyone have any question for Michael? No? Is there a motion to appoint Michael? All right, is there a second? Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Great, thank you very much, Michael. All right, on to item number five, Park and Rex Recommendation on the Pickleball Courts' Construction Bids. Is there someone who would like to speak to that? Hey, Joe. Good evening.
Justin. Kristina, President and Chairman of Parker Rec Commission. With your permission, may I pass the motion for a session?
Thank you, Justin.
I know on the agenda, the only thing that is there is pickleball, but I'm giving you a status report on all four projects that Parker Rec is dealing with.
Just in my neck of time.
Thank you. So, as you know, Parker Rec can only spend what we're given. We cannot exceed our budget, and the budget for pickleball was $209,122 allocated on August 3rd. We went out to bid, and we did exactly what we said we were going to do. We bid with the specifications for vituminous concrete, replacing what's there now on the basketball court, but we also asked for the alternate bid on the more desirable and durable post-tension concrete. I've given you the, I've given you the breakdown on everything. If we go with the vituminous concrete, we should have a surplus on the allocated funds of about $16,770. Now, obviously, that's give or take, but it gives you an idea where we would be taking the bid as it is. And that's all the construction costs, the consulting fees, which, by the way, were under a separate contract with Carl and the former town manager and our consultant. The contingencies, we, we always add a contingency to any contract for any unexpected or unanticipated expenses or costs that we might run into, any problems that we run into on site. So, on the left-hand side, you see vituminous concrete, on the right-hand side, you see post-tension. If we go with the post-tension concrete, we have a shortage, or we need an additional almost $64,000. Questions?
It's a delta of about $80,000, right? Because the concrete has got a $16,000 over, and this one's a $63,000 under.
Correct.
So, the swing between the two is about 80.
Yes. If you see, what we did here is we removed the vituminous, the bid for the vituminous, and then replaced it with the alternate for the post-tension.
Thank you.
So, it should be as accurate as I can be at this point.
I guess that was going to be my question. So, the actual difference in cost between just putting down tar and doing this post-tension concrete is probably about $70,000, roughly? Roughly? Okay.
The shortage, the shortage is 63, using all the funds that are out.
I got you, I got you. No problem.
So, so, as I see this situation, just from questions that I've asked previously, so, if we do the regular, regular, the original bid, that, that surface, we could probably expect it to last 10 years, 15 years at the max.
Asphalt is not as durable. You can expect the post-tension concrete to last probably, we're told, probably about 20 or more years, with fewer maintenance issues. Asphalt can always have maintenance issues, so your maintenance issues could arise five years in, 10 years in, but basically, you will be replacing the asphalt at some point during the lifetime of the post-tension concrete.
Yeah, so, I'm just trying to get sort of the value, a value analysis here. So, if we put the new surface down, we might gain 10, 15 years of life?
That's what I'm told. It's more durable, more desirable, fewer maintenance issues.
And so, and then, the flip side of what I asked Richard, you know, we have the ARPA funds, I have it up here, I keep seeing this big amount of money that hasn't been spent, but Richard says that, you know, there's probably $300,000, maybe, that, that isn't allocated yet. Is that a true statement?
It's subject to discussion at the workshop.
Subject, subject to discussion at the workshop. You know, what I'm trying to get at is, if, if we wanted to do this, there are potentially ARPA funds available that we could shift around to gain 10 years. So, that's really the question. Do you, is, is $60-something thousand worth an extra 10 years?
And if I may point out, if you look at the next item on my status report, the turf replacement, that's under contract already. That, we're solid on the contract commencement is supposed to be June 1, we have a letter from the contractor. Based on the numbers that I have to work with right now, it appears that there may be close to $40,000 available under that allocated amount. So, we're not sure yet, obviously, we can't be absolutely positive, but our consultant tells us that we don't even need to put in a 10% contingency there. 5% should be sufficient, because we're only replacing the turf, and the base is pretty solid. We, we don't have to do much to the base at all, except prep it to receive the turf. So, he said a 5% contingency is reasonable there, as opposed to 10%, and that's what I use to calculate the numbers here, a 5% contingency. So, based on all of that, it looks like there'll be between $39,000 and $40,000 left, if there's nothing that we run into.
That's a firm fixed-price contract?
Pardon?
That contract, you said you have a contract in place?
That's in place.
Firm fixed-price?
Firm fixed-price. Yes.
When most people are building pickleball courts, or tennis courts, or basketball courts, are they using this new surface?
We're told that most are using the post-tension concrete surface.
So, does this take it down to 23K, 23,000, given the, given the balance that you pointed out to us?
I'm sorry.
Given the balance you just pointed out to us from the turf, we're now at 23,000 difference?
Yes, yes. If everything works out with the turf.
But, but there's more, right? You have more on your sheet, let's keep going.
Right. There is more on the sheet. I tried to give you an entire picture of what we've been, we've been dealing with a lot here. We've got four projects up in the air, and generally, we have, we've been able to get bids on three of them. We're in the design stage on the beach house and the restrooms, so, I do have a query on that, but that's.
Can I, I don't want to interrupt you, Joe, just to run a roll. I, I just want to say this about that bathhouse. It's a, it's a great project, we all know that, but I think that's going to run into a lot more stumbling blocks, which you know, and I know, and Parker Rec, and maybe the public should know, because FEMA and everybody else has now got their hands into it, and want to make it high, a high-rise affair, if I'm not mistaken, instead of it being where it was, low. Now, when you go high-rise, now you have to do ramps for the handicap, and that starts another whole procedure, so that, that, quite frankly, to me, that bathhouse, I think is a feature that.
Well, here's the problem. Right now, we're not ADA compliant. The bathhouse is falling apart. The likelihood is, if we don't do something with it, we're going to have to take it down, and there'll be nothing there. So, there won't be restrooms at that end of the beach. However, our plans are to offer different alternatives to raising the FEMA hike. I know what you're talking about.
No, I know, I just, I have a lot of problems, and we have a lot of money tied up.
I've had to raise the cottages 13 feet off, off the sand. In order to get by the FEMA regulations. However, we might be able to get through this, and we won't know until the plans are submitted, and our design plans are coming in next week, and my intention is to sit down with Abby and go over everything with her, and determine what, what we need to do, what we need to submit. So, until we do that, I can't say that this is a dead project.
No, I, I don't want to put it dead, but I mean, we're tying up $300,000 there.
But, on the other hand, you need to. If you're going to replace this resource at the beach, you're going to have to tie it up for the time being. And we should know, within a few months, whether or not, you know, within the next couple of months, we should know whether or not we're going to be able to do that. I mean, if, if it comes down and they say, no, we're not going to allow flood vents, and we're not going to allow the flood gates underneath the building, like we have at the other building, then.
Concessions, Dan.
Right, it's, and that's working perfectly. I mean, we, that, I mean, think about how old that building is already, okay? You tasked us, or Board of Finance tasked us, with building a building that was low-maintenance, had good utility, and would last a long time, and that building is there, and it's low-maintenance, and it's lasting, and it's survived. So, we're looking to do similarly with this other project. I mean, it needs to be done. It's a safety issue, and it's an ADA issue. So, that's why we're, that's why it was prioritized among our projects.
So, the scoreboard, the scoreboard project is going to run over?
Yes. That one, the bids came in over, but we were allocated $262,000, and as you can see.
You were short before even the scoreboard.
Yes, with the two bids that came in. To understand Phase 1 and Phase 2, Phase 1 is the removal of the existing bleachers and installation of the foundation for the new bleachers. That's site preparation. The second Phase 2 is the purchase and installation of the new bleachers. That's why we did it in those phases. And then, while we did that, because we told you that we would try to include the scoreboard if we could, we asked for a proposal on the scoreboard, and the proposal came in at $30,389. Got to put on my glasses, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you're right, but I'm just, I'm just wanting to harp on that shortage, $57,000 before you even got to the scoreboard.
So.
I mean, I think, I mean, at the end of the day, I mean, right now, we're here about, we're here about pickleball.
Right.
I mean, well, I'm just saying, I mean, I know they all come into play, but if we're here for pickleball, and we know that pickleball and the turf are done, basically, right? You have prices on pickleball courts, turf field's basically done, we sort of know what we're looking for right there.
We're ready to go to the contract on pickleball when we get direction from the town council. So, because obviously, we can't spend more than we have.
In a minute, we're looking at, you know, again, if, if the turf comes what it's supposed to come in at, we get $40,000 there, you're 63 over on the post-tension. I mean, personally, post-tension, if that gives us less maintenance down the road, and it's going to last a longer period of time, I mean, you know, I mean, concrete's going to have a problem. I mean, it's going to settle, I mean, we're in the Northeast. It's, it's warm, it's cold, it, it's going to crack, you're going to have issues, you're going to have maintenance issues, you're going to have liability issues. I mean, so, if we're going to spend extra money and do it the right way, right from the beginning, you know, 63 shortage there, you got 40 on the other side, I mean, I mean, as a council, I mean, obviously, it's everybody's decision, but, I mean, it seems that we move forward with, with those and get those going, and the other ones, as far as the beach house, we'll know whenever, and the bleachers are going to have issues.
We're both just on the pickleball part of this right now.
Right.
Because we know what's going to happen. We know that there's going to be some additional funds left with the turf field that we can offset that number, and it's a lot less for us to have to reallocate, because the reallocation of ARPA funding is a process, because we've already allocated all those funds. So, basically, you would have to contact whoever you're going to be taking money from and say, are you going to use that money? Because they have, I mean, if it's been allocated, they have until 2026 to use it. So, just because it's not used now doesn't mean it's not going to be used, so they would have to have an input into as far as how long it's going to take them to use those funds. But I think there's still enough there, once we have our workshop and go through all those numbers, where those two projects, it's not a big, it's not a big lift.
Do we need to allocate the money from pockets tonight?
I don't think so.
We can simply?
I mean, we're supposed to have, we're going to have a workshop.
We can just vote on whether or not we're going to approve.
Their.
The pickleball thing.
So, we can approve the recommendation?
Because we'll have, we're supposed to have the workshop.
Okay, so we'll have the workshop.
We can start looking at the allocation.
And with all due respect to the town manager and to all the council members, I, I did a complete report because I felt that you needed to see the overall picture of the funds that you've allocated to us for the project, so you could see where things stood at this point in time. So, now you know everything we know. Any other questions?
No.
Excuse me, do you want any more information from, from some of the?
I think we're good. I tell you, sir, and all due deference, just to save time, I think we're good.
You guys have done an excellent job, but there are some really important points, like the 20-year warranty that you get with the concrete. But I, but I'll, I'll always say.
I think you're best. I'll make a motion.
All right.
That we accept the revised bid for the pickleball, which reflects, pickleball courts, which reflects an increase with the new ad alternate PTC. In the, in the neighborhood, what is the grand total now, Joseph? $272,941.44, is that correct?
That's the construction cost.
Very correct. That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Okay, great. All right. Thank you, and on to item number six, Estuary Request for ARPA Funds. Is Elizabeth Goldstein here? May I ask you, Richard, to address the idea for the public?
Let's see here. The state of Connecticut was allocated $10 million from ARPA funds to support senior centers. They've set aside a million of that for statewide senior center activities, but 9 million is slated to go directly to senior centers. We have given you the presentation that OPM gave us, as well as the allocations for all of the towns in Connecticut. I met with the Estuary folks, I met with our senior affairs director, met with a board member from Estuary, and determined that the most effective and efficient use of these funds is to allocate them to Estuary to support activities for Clinton seniors. That still leaves another $53,000 in ARPA funding that is directed towards our senior activities in Clinton. So, this, this ARPA money is not taking the place, or is not as different than the ARPA money that we've allocated.
This is state.
Yeah, this is coming from the state.
Correct.
We have a $40,000 piece of that money coming down from the state.
Right, but we really don't have a senior center of such that can spend these funds.
Doesn't that thing also say programming?
Yes, it does.
And so, quite honestly, my opinion, and I'll tell you right off the bat, I think we could use that $40,000 here. And that wonderful girl that we have is coordinating senior, senior programming, Akompara, could use that $40,000 here in Clinton and really get more programs going for, for the people. She's done a marvelous job already on just the fitness that we've given her, and, I mean, that's just my feeling.
Did you talk with Christina about this?
Yeah. She was comfortable with this money going to Estuary and doing. Yep. She was comfortable with this money going to Estuary and doing her programming with the money that she had been allocated. Also, the fact that it is, there is no senior center there makes it more and more difficult for her to spend that kind of money within the two-year period.
Bless you.
For senior activities.
Well, so, so she was here, and so with the Pearson situation, you know, she made a whole presentation on how, you know, eventually she'll go in there and do more, you know, more, more programs once that opens up. But she'll need to get things going and ramped up beforehand, so would that, I don't remember the timeline.
That was an executive session.
Oh, well, so I'll say it a different way. So can, well, do we think she'll need money within the next two-year period where we can, as Dennis says, give her that money? And she might not need it right now because she doesn't have a building, but she might need it in the next couple of years.
She has, she's going to be given money for programming for the next couple of years.
From ARPA?
Yes.
What's the breakdown again between Estuary and her? How much is going to each?
Estuary is getting about forty thousand, and our senior coordinator's been allocated fifty-three thousand.
So the total's ninety-three, and it's split about half-half. And then the question that Dennis is raising, should we give the whole ninety to her?
No, it's not ninety, it's only forty.
No, no, no.
She's already got fifty-three.
Oh, yeah, right, so give her, right, right, so give her forty more.
From the town.
Give her forty more.
Yeah, we gave her fifty-three from the town that we got originally, right?
We gave her fifty-three.
Right.
The forty does not come from that fifty-three.
No, I know, it comes from the special things the state has found, or got money from the feds. But I'm just saying, yeah, so we got fifty-three that we gave her, or we're going to give her, if she's got a chance to use. And like Kristen, I mean, if you give her another forty, that's ninety thousand dollars that, that woman can do wonders in the next two years.
But she did agree with Richard, too.
She agreed.
She did agree that the money would go, she thought it was a good place.
She thought it was a good idea.
That's really ambitious for someone who's really not a full-time employee.
Okay.
She hasn't even used the fifty-three. So basically, in a year, I mean, until 2026, she has fifty-three thousand, but she hasn't used any of it yet.
She's good with it.
Okay, any other?
She's good with, that's fine.
So there's a motion to authorize a town manager to take steps to get funds on, in Clinton's name. Is there a motion for that? Second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, all right, motion carries. Okay, on to item number seven, National Poetry Month. Is Kathy Weiss, our poet laureate, here to speak?
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Don't worry, I'm not going to ask for any money. So usually, because I work independently, I usually give reports quarterly. I missed the DIA one due because I had COVID. So I just want to give a rundown. Most of you know what I've been doing in the community. Some of you haven't met me before, but I'm not going to bore you with, you know, what I've done. I'm almost to the end of my term. I've, every year, completed everything that has been asked of me. Since January, I've attended all poet laureate council meetings, the Connecticut State Council poet laureates. I ran four successful open mic, and I used, one thing that I'm being lauded for in the community and among my peers is that I use various forms of art, because I've served on art boards, and, you know, I have a lot of art experience. And I've used poetry combined with different arts, you know, and for grief. There is a really large need in the community for seniors for that, and I've talked with Michaela at the Estuary, and she couldn't have one for one reason or the other. So I stopped my group once they were able to pick it up, but I've had so many calls for it again. I'm also running a caregiver support group for free. I do these for free. And I've used poetry for that. So I have used my workshops, which I recommended, in that vein this winter. The other thing is my reach has, in these open mics and these grief support groups, has been from Stamford, Connecticut to Rhode Island. And I was, I'm very honored to bring, somebody heard my poems at Memorial Day, and I partnered, they run a nonprofit for soldiers. It's called Hooks for Heroes, and we partnered and made care baskets. And my three poems for Memorial Day are gone, have gone to Walter Reed in packets for wounded soldiers. So I'm really happy that, you know, Clinton has reached that. I've already, Joe Dietrich asked me to participate again, and I have written a poem, you know, he asked me to write a different one every year, and he's approved it for this year. My biggest event, though, was National Poetry Month. It was held last Saturday, and I was so fortunate to be able to bring Antoinette Brimble, our state poet laureate, and Peggy Deechay, the president of the Council of Poet Laureate, to the, to the Henry Carter Hall library. I mean, she was charging thirty-five dollars, you know, in Madison the next day, but, you know, you know, because I had, I was lucky to have her come here and bring this together. We had a very good crowd for poetry, and people I didn't know or weren't related to me came, so I considered that really good. And Valley Shore YMCA, Valley Shore Community TV did a great job videotaping it, and I've put it on Experience Clinton the whole, you know, hour. I have put it on all of the Clinton sites. Now, there is, we had a panel discussion on the new state guidelines for poet laureates, and we had question and answers about how to become a poet laureate. And, you know, so that is very important information, and that could be accessed by any of the towns. The other thing is, we've had two new poet laureates in the area. We've never had one in Branford before, so I've supported that poet laureate, and, you know, I read in Branford in February. We have a new poet laureate in Guilford. I supported him, and I gave a reading with him last week. I think that's about it. So what's happening, my term is, ends June first. Let's see what's happening. I published a book solely for the purpose to fundraise, and I'm going to be giving a grant to the Clinton Library as a legacy, a third, each year I give a legacy. This, this year is going to, for a new microphone, if needed, and also for stipends to bring quality literature and poets to Clinton. So I'm having a fundraiser May third, if anybody is interested. I'll send the information. It's on my card. The Portrait of Clinton Poetry Project, the proceeds went to the tree that's parked. And by the way, thank you, Carrie and Chris, for supporting and coming to that. And thank you for all you've done. You've both come to a couple of events, and I know when the transition from selectmen to town council came in, Chris, you worked very hard to make the transfer to keep the poet laureate, so I appreciate everyone. That being said, I've decided, it's very bittersweet, but I've decided to step down June first. You know, the state really, really feels that a poet laureate should only serve for three years, and, you know, quite frankly, I agree. I don't believe in perpetuity. I think the whole purpose of having a poet laureate was for sustainable, to get your sustainable status in town. You have to, you should have, you have to have a poet laureate. That's a requirement. And the whole idea is, you know, if you keep having a different one every three years, by the time ten years comes about, you're going to have a, you know, bunch of, you know, people who can really support, nourish, and, you know, vitalize the quality of, you know, literature and arts in the community, and that's the whole purpose. And so for the greater good, I've decided to step down, but I'll still be around. But I highly recommend you, whether you continue to appoint someone through the town council or go to what most towns are going to now, is the library. The new state guidelines, I'm going to, I'm hoping to come back the next town council meeting and, you know, kind of vote on whether you might move to a model, to move to a library appointing the poet laureate. There's a lot of reasons for that, and I will present that next time. But just for you, I have, you know, just to give you some background information, I've took the time to go on the state website, download their requirements, plus I talked to all, some of my peers in the library, and what are they asking for on their applications? What do they want? And I also took some of my experiences and suggestions for my term, so I'll give that.
Thank you.
Pass these out.
Okay.
And, and I think that I did everything, you know, I made everything easy, new application process, even if you decide not to go to the library model, look this over, maybe we can discuss it next time. I really think that the application process on the town of Clinton website is outdated. One of the things they're pushing for, and is somebody, they're asking the poet laureate candidates to come in with a project that they would do for the community. For example, the Branford poet laureate's going to have all these little garden nookie things, you know, I mean, community, so somebody really should be involved with the community. And they're also asking that somebody at least live in the town, you know, you have to live in the town, but don't go to Florida for eight months, you know, they expect you to live in the town for eight months. That's the new state guidelines. So there's a lot of things that, it's all here. I did a lot of work to make it easier for you, so I've asked for no money, and I tried to make everything easy for you. So thank you very much. And it has been my absolute honor to serve as poet laureate, and it gave me a little bit of a place in town, and I got to meet a lot of people. And I got to be very involved with people, seniors, high school kids. It's been a great experience. I got to, I've got to write poems for both the governor and Senator Blumenthal. Oh, I forgot to mention the poetry garden. Yeah, so May third, my fundraiser. May eighteenth, I'm hosting in Clinton, I'm hosting a professional development for all the state poet laureate, all the towns poet laureate, and staff from the Connecticut Commission on the Arts, and I will be doing grant writing and funding. And then in the afternoon, we're going to have AI, artificial, protecting your legal protection of your work, and we're going to have enhancing your performance. So that's happening in Clinton, May eighteen. So I'm, you know, Clinton has been very visible. I've made Clinton very visible. And the other thing that is going to be, make Clinton very visible, is a project that I worked on with my partner, the Tower Foundation, and the state, is going to be the opening of the Katherine Weiss Poetry Garden in New Haven. We bought thirteen hundred, three, three hundred feet of blight, and it's transformed into gorgeous Destination Garden. And it's mostly for the, the, the advantage of it is that it has features for senior citizens never, ever done before. The whole garden is wheelchair accessible, and the, you know, we have beds that are wheelchair height, just for wheelchairs, special wheelchair planting beds so they can grow their own food, and then we are growing food now. But also, I have been teaching poetry down there, and we have, I forgot, you know, gotten some seniors published. And so the Katherine Weiss Poetry Garden is the largest component of the Destination Gardens, part of the New Haven revitalization. And when people wonder who Katherine Weiss was, they'll know that I was the Clinton poet laureate. So I'm hoping to, that I, you know, made you proud as your laureate. I put my heart into it, and I honestly thank you for appointing me.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I'll see you in the near future. All right, on to item number eight, the Public Works line item transfer. Everyone had a chance to look over that. And does anyone, you don't have anyone to ask, do we have anyone to ask questions of? I don't think so. Does anyone need to ask questions?
No.
All right, great. Is there a motion to approve the Public Works line item transfer?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, all right, motion carries. Next, number ten, no, number nine, the Financial Monthly Report. We all received that. It's not going to be presented, but if anybody has any questions, Richard can take those questions to the finance department. Are there any questions at the moment?
I thought, so on this report, there's a three-point, three, one, four, for capital projects. So I thought that when it was all said and done with the budget, we were more so closer to three-six.
That's next year's budget?
This is the current fiscal year.
Pardon?
This is the fiscal year we're in.
Twenty-fourth. It says appropriated surplus for fiscal year twenty-four.
Yeah, the next fiscal year is twenty-five.
Right, so, so this is the twenty-fourth, so none of these have any of the updated or any information related to the current budget.
Right.
Okay, and we also have already allocated one point four million. That never shows up on any of these.
The what, I'm sorry?
We allocated one point four million dollars for sidewalks. And so it never shows up on any of these, any of these documents. And, you know, when we're doing our calculation for fund balance, obviously, I feel that that should be part of it, because it's, it's going to reduce our undesignated fund balance, so.
Isn't that for next year, Chris?
Again, but I'm just saying, just knowing, going, as we're advancing, we already proved it this year. It's already proved.
I could speak to that if you want. The one point four million was in our capital for twenty-four, twenty-five, that we're going to spend it.
Correct.
But the reimbursement, the eighty percent we're going to get from the state is not in our budget. So if you're saying our designated fund is going to go higher, you're right.
No, it's not, well, it's not going to go higher. That eighty percent will just offset what we're paying. We're paying for the full project.
Correct.
The one point four, we pay.
Correct.
We don't get money back, we've had a sidebar project right now, it's five years going. We've gotten no money back.
Right.
So I'm just trying to give a more accurate reading of what our undesignated fund balance looks like, because you can't, we can't sit there and say, we're going to get that eighty, but we're going to get that money back in a year, or two years. We don't, we have no clue.
Right, so it's, that reimbursement's not reflected in the financials.
But what Hank's saying is the one point four was.
Was, right, the spending was, and the reimbursement is not.
The spending was, the reimbursement.
Well, I, okay. I mean, I'd like to hear that from a finance director of where it is in here.
This is last year.
No, I understand, so, okay.
It's this year, the year that our.
Twenty-four, twenty-five, the budget that we're voting on is twenty-four, twenty-five, July first of twenty-four till June thirtieth, twenty-five.
Right.
It's in that budget. The one we're looking at is July first, twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty-four.
And that fourteen, that one million four hundred thousand was allocated during this period right now.
Fiscal year twenty-four.
Oh, was it twenty-four?
Fiscal year twenty-four was the one point four million.
That's been taken out of this year's undesignated fund.
But it.
That should show as a deficit in this undesignated fund, yes, because that's less money right now. If, God forbid, something happened and we had a hurricane tomorrow morning, and we needed funds, we could spend X amount of money up to make sure we don't spend that one million point four, because we've got that designated towards shut sidewalks.
Yeah, it's in a capital project for next year.
It's, so the question is, was it in our capital project budget or not, right? Was the one point four million included in our capital expenditure plan for, for fiscal year budget, either last year or this year? And I think it was, but you say Carl overlooked it. I don't think he did.
But our, our budget that we just passed does not have the one point four, or that we're proposing to pass in capital projects, does not have one point four million.
Yeah, it does.
The town manager's capital budget.
Okay.
Well, what you're saying is it's not reflected.
It's not reflective on here, because that has already been allocated. Those funds have been allocated. That's all. And that's not, that's, that has nothing to do with fiscal year twenty-twenty-five.
We'll get a catch-up of that, well, typically, on June thirtieth, we would know what the updated for this year is, typically. We don't hear about it until January, but we'll see with the new finance director when we get one. All right, any other potential questions for Richard? All right, on to number ten, the chairman's report. I have nothing. I believe that our meeting is going on long enough, so Richard has a few updates for us next. So eleven, the town manager's report.
Just to let you know, the work on the purchase and sales agreement for Pearson is ongoing, and I believe you'll be updated sometime in May about that. The advertisement for human services director just closed, and I believe we have some candidates that we'll be interviewing for that position. The congressionally-directed spending request went out about a week ahead of schedule, and that's been received. And most importantly, I'm asking you to schedule a work session to discuss ARPA funds and looking at the twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth. Want to do that now, Mary?
Please.
If you can, or?
I can't do the twenty-fifth, but I could do the twenty-fourth.
AM or PM?
For the Wednesday.
Yes. I can't do the twenty-fourth.
Carrie cannot do Wednesday.
What's that?
I can't do Wednesday. I can't do Wednesday, I can't do the twenty-fourth, I'm teaching.
You can only do the twenty-fifth.
I, I can't, I, I can't do Mondays or Thursdays. I mean, I could do it in the morning, if you wanted to do it in the morning.
Morning of?
The twenty-fifth, I mean, the, the twenty-fourth in the morning I could do.
Hank, are you able to do the morning?
What day are you talking about?
Twenty-fourth.
Wednesday, the twenty-fourth in the morning? Yeah, I can do it.
It's the next Wednesday.
Next Tuesday. What day?
Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
Morning, but Chris is on the table, too. The twenty-fifth in the morning, Chris?
I can't do the twenty-fifth.
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Well, I have to, meeting.
So not Tuesday either?
I'm going to be honest with you, I mean.
I could do Tuesday in the morning, or Tues, Tuesday after, Tuesday night or Tuesday.
If you want to book it for a Wednesday, I can see what time I have to go into session.
Wednesday morning, see what time you have to go in?
I don't have to be in there until eleven.
So nine in the morning?
Sure. Nine?
Nine, Wednesday the twenty-fourth?
Good.
Next Wednesday at nine.
Okay, ARPA. All right, anything else, Richard?
That's it.
All right, and number twelve is council discussion. Anybody have anything that we haven't discussed yet that need to be? Yeah, right. Okay, all right.
I just.
Can, can we switch it to eight instead of nine, so that'll give him enough time?
That's better for me, too. Yeah.
Perfect.
Eight AM it is.
Eight AM.
Okay, great.
Oh, I like it.
Okay.
All right, council discussion, anything?
Just a quick, all I wanted to say was, I heard that Beau and Abby had a meeting, and I just wanted to thank them for doing that on the basketball court. I don't think, there's no, I don't have an update, but I'm glad that they met, and they're, they did make progress, so, thank you for doing that.
Anyone else? Discussion? No? All right, any, thirteen, Town Council Committee Liaison Reports, Brian?
The Design Standards Group continues to meet, they're looking at townwide, not just the downtown area, as I reported last time, that continues, they should have more of an update next, two meetings from now for the town council.
Any other liaison?
Sorry, I missed the police thing last week. Reading their minutes, everything seems to be going okay. I was a miss, there, Michael Scholl told me this, I should have said this at the last meeting, about our police department getting that Kalia accreditation at the highest level. I mean, and that's rare for a rookie police department to go in first time around and accomplish that, and I believe there's only three towns in the whole state that did that. And if I'm wrong, we have the chairperson, chairman of the police commission, if you would like to add to that, Paul, about the accreditation at all?
Nothing other than, you're, you're correct. They went right to the highest level of accreditation, it's good for the town. It's going to help us out, we're going to stay with the accreditation, keeps going every year, and they get reaccredited to that in four-year periods, but not many people, or not many towns, I should say, do get that, at that highest accreditation first time. It's a testament to the police department doing great work.
Anyone else? Liaison?
EDC didn't have a meeting, they didn't have a quorum.
All right, so, on to item fourteen, is there a motion to go into an executive session? Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, ready? All right, so on to motion number, sorry, item number fifteen, the ratification of the director of the finance, of the finance director's contract. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
To ratify that? All right, is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion?
We're ratifying the current chair.
Of the finance director.
First.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, oh, I'm sorry.
That's right, that's right. Okay, discussion, we did that?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Right, motion carries. And item number sixteen is a motion for the ratification of the tax collector's contract.
Authorization to negotiate, or is that a ratification?
This is a ratification, is what I have on my motion.
It's, I mean, it's up to you, is that what you've always done in a lot of the town managers?
Yeah, just him.
Yeah.
Because if he's going to try to ratify the contract, if it doesn't get ratified?
Yeah.
Nothing happens.
So moved.
Ratify whatever he.
When he comes back and says, yeah, it's great.
Okay. Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. All right, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Beat them to it.
Discussion.